Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the city employee at the back of the room. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to let council know your opinion without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact the staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook, YouTube, X, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. Member, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order for June 10th, 2024. Everybody mark present. Thank you. City Clerk, reflect everybody here.
All members are here.
Thank you. Please join Councilmember Stip in the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, pour out your Holy Spirit on your faithful people. Keep us steadfast in your grace and truth, protect and deliver us in times of temptation, defend us against all enemies, and grant to our city your saving grace. Please keep watch over the men and women serving our community, our state, and our nation. Be with them in all they do. Amen.
We have one communication item tonight. We'll be hearing about an adaptive program partnership. Please introduce yourself for those watching.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. David Seid, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation Department. Back in March of this year, staff and I came before council to provide an update on the city's adaptive programs as part of celebrating National Therapeutic Recreation Month. At that meeting, we shared updates on expanded programming for those with special needs through our Goodyear Roadrunners sports teams, as well as various social programs and events. We concluded that presentation with a brief video that not only showed the impact our programs are having on participants, but on their families and the various volunteers as well. Unbeknownst to us, representatives from the Microsoft Corporation were in attendance that evening regarding another matter. But they were so moved by our update that they reached out to the city staff and inquire about opportunities to partner and support future adaptive programming. During subsequent conversations with Microsoft, we learned of their community donations program, which supports deserving 501(c)(3) organizations in the communities and surrounding areas where they have facilities. As a result of a little brainstorming and creativity, we engaged our partners at Special Olympics Arizona, who were more than eager to submit an application to Microsoft for consideration. Tonight, we are happy to share that the application was approved and will be awarded funding. Although Special Olympics Arizona is the official recipient of the community donation, a sizable portion of the award will directly impact and support Goodyear Adaptive Program. Here to share more on this exciting partnership is Avery Africa, the Development Manager with Microsoft. Avery?
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Pizzillo. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here today.
There you go.
I am honored and delighted to be here with you, and I see so many familiar faces around these chambers. As you may know, Microsoft is committed to empowering every person and every organization on the planet to achieve more. We believe that technology can be a force of good and for inclusion. That is why we are looking for ways to support our local communities and to partner with organizations to share our vision. Through these chambers, we learned about Goodyear Adaptive Recreation Program and the connection to Special Olympics Arizona. We were impressed by the work of the City of Goodyear staff to provide recreational and social opportunities for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We learned Special Olympics Arizona was a 501(c)(3) organization that was based in the City of Goodyear. Through staff, we were connected with Jamie Heckerman and to learn more about the Special Olympics Arizona organization and how Microsoft could help support its mission. In addition to a financial contribution to the Special Olympics Arizona... Oh, I think I was supposed to be flipping through slides, you guys. In addition to the financial contribution to Special Olympics Arizona, members of our local Microsoft staff came together in April for a Special Olympics Arizona Summer Games as volunteers. The experience was inspiring, especially through the support of the community and the unified partners. We witnessed the joy, courage, and determination of the athletes as they competed in various events. We also saw the camaraderie, the friendship, and the solidarity among the athletes, coaches, and families, especially the volunteers. It was truly a memorable and uplifting experience for us all. We are grateful to be part of this journey, as both our organizations share the vision of creating a more inclusive world where everyone can participate and thrive regardless of their abilities or backgrounds. We thank the Goodyear Adaptive Recreation Program and Special Olympics Arizona for their leadership and dedication. We also thank Goodyear City Council and Mayor Pizzillo for their support and recognition. We look forward to continuing our collaboration and to making a positive difference in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we give a hand? Now, we have some appointments to boards and commissions and committee.
Wally wants to speak.
Oh, Wally wants to say something? Go ahead, Wally.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Microsoft, for coming in and being a partner in this very important program. Will the participants of our Special Olympics and our events stand up and be recognized, please? We're so proud of all of you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. With that, now we have appointments to boards and commissions and committees. All right? We don't have a presentation for this item, so would council please enter a motion and second to approve the recommendation from the council Subcommittee for Boards, Commissions, and Committees? We have a motion and a second. Anybody like to speak on this particular item? Go ahead.
I want to thank all the citizens that stepped up to serve the community. I think it's great, and especially heartwarming to see all the young people, the next generation of leaders. They were amazing. I just have to say, our commission, it was the Vice Mayor, me, and Councilmember Campbell, and we have, I feel very safe with this next generation coming up. They are just wonderful.
Thank you. I agree. Couldn't agree more. Anybody else? With that, with the McCracken, please come on up. I guess the...
Let's do it.
Go ahead. Well, you're right. Go ahead, open. Seven zero. Thank you. Come on in and swear in your commissioners.
Okay, because we've got such a large group, I'm going to break it into youth commissioners one group, and then the other boards first. So Ernie Nepomuceno, Carol Palmer, Cindy Brown. Go ahead and stand on that side of the mic. Hi. Go ahead and stand there. All right, go ahead and stand there. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carol Palmer.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
of the United States
of the United States.
and the constitutional laws
and the constitutional laws.
of the State of Arizona
of the State of Arizona.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the same
to the same.
and defend them against all enemies
and defend them against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic.
and I will faithfully and impartially
and I will faithfully and impartially.
discharge the duties of Commissioner
discharge the duties of Commissioner.
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
so I do affirm.
so I do affirm.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
I want to thank you all for your willingness to serve. It's always nice to see our citizens stepping up and helping others within the community. And again, we are second to none for who does that. So again, thank you all.
Okay, so this is a big group, so as I call your name, just go ahead and come on up and form a line through here, if we can, hopefully. Lucas Hamblin, Ayahda Hudson, Logan McGee, Mercedes Martinez, Isabella Franco, Kylie Colvin, Bailey Elliott, Dazlin Hernandez, Bree Blair, Cadence Stevenson, Christian Diaz, Leilani Manley, Sophie Pizzillo, Mica Atkinson, Kendall Bailey, and Sophie Chivam. Big group, so shorter people in front if you have to do two lines. I'm always in front, so. Sure. So we're going to need to form a couple lines through here, or actually, if you guys want to just go ahead and go in front of council, and I'll pull this back over here.
Can we stand up and be behind them?
We're going to take a picture after, after we do the swearing part. Okay, again, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States
of the United States.
and the constitutional laws
and the constitutional laws.
of the State of Arizona
of the State of Arizona.
and that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same
and allegiance to the same.
and defend them against all enemies
and defend them against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic.
and that I will faithfully and impartially
faithfully and impartially.
discharge the duties of Commissioner
discharge the duties of Commissioner.
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
so I do affirm.
so I do affirm.
Congratulations. So, did you want to come down? So the mayor's actually going to come down and do a picture with you guys.
The council, they're coming down?
We think it's good, but we're better if we stay up. Yes, we stay up and they stay down. Yeah. Yeah. That's...
This seems to work out. Yeah, yeah, push that over. I know, all the big chairs. Here we go. We're almost as tall as they are. I know.
We're taller than us.
You guys get used to Jeremy telling you what to do.
Yeah.
I always need direction. Here to the...
All right, guys, here we are. One, two, and three. Perfect.
We got more behind you.
Sorry, a lot of mom and dad pictures.
Yes.
See more cameras?
We got one more.
Are you all good?
Oh, there's more going.
It's good.
It's good.
Thank you for volunteering.
It's good.
Give them time to get out. Lortano. I mean, I know our future's very bright with this group of kids stepping up and, and being part of our government. So again, I really want to thank them all. With that being said, now it's time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of Goodyear City Council. We have any cards?
No, Mayor.
That makes it great. City Clerk, please read Consent Agenda Items 3 through 14 by title only.
Number three, approval of minutes. Number four, adopt resolution number 2024-2403 declaring and adopting the results of the special election for the general plan held on May 21st, 2024, declaring the results of the vote on the general plan 2035, Growing Goodyear, Planning Our Future question, ordering the city clerk to record this resolution, and setting an effective date. Number five, approval of new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for copper and sage G S Q located at 1971 North Globe Drive, Unit 105. Number six, adopt resolution number 2024-2409 conditionally approving the termination of a portion of an existing drainage easement, providing authorization and direction for recordation and providing effective dates of the termination and resolution. Number seven, adopt resolution number 2024-2407 vacating and abandoning a portion of right-of-way acquired for West Goodyear Boulevard North, generally located along the south side of West Goodyear Boulevard North, approximately 790 feet east of Estrella Parkway, providing for recordation and effective dates. Number eight, approve the license agreement to use the Phoenix Police Department Phoenix Emergency Vehicle Operations Center. Number nine, approve the I G A intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services in the Sonoran Valley. Number 10, adopt resolution number 2024-2406 approving the modification of assessment number 27-01-001 within the McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District. Number 11, authorize the contract for expenditure of construction funds for approved C I P project number 42050 up to $768,700 for traffic management center parking lot improvements. Number 12, approve the agreement with Buckeye Water Conservation District for emergency discharge of brine and industrial cooling water. Number 13, adopt the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Fiscal Year 2025 Pension Funding Policy. And number 14, conditionally approve the final plot of El Cidro Phase 2 Parcel 1(c) subject to stipulations.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Number eight, I want to have a question.
You have a question on eight?
Oh, excuse me, a question on nine.
A question on nine? Who's got it for nine? Well, we had to enter him, please, chief. I guess it's going to be you.
My question is, I've read the resolution...
Let them get, let them get there. Go ahead.
I've read the resolution. How much is this costing us per year exactly?
I believe it's $350,000 and change. I would have to grab my computer to look up exactly what the number is.
And it's renewable, it's the same amount of money for the next three years, and then it's renewable in three years. They're not going to be raising it in year two or year three.
That's my understanding, ma'am.
Okay, and my next question is, I'm looking at the map. All of the green area, that's their coverage?
Yes.
Even when there's no people there?
Correct.
Okay.
And if I, I might need to, to phone a friend, but I believe that the, the amount is determined each year, and we are given a report by the spring, February, if I recall, of what the new cost will be each year.
I was going to say, how can we budget it if we don't know the exact cost?
So we're going to put, you said $350,000 in next year's budget to cover this year?
Yes, ma'am.
So then next year, you'll have to come back with another amount for us?
That's my understanding, yes. Is that it's, we're due a report by February of what their projected cost will be for the coming year.
Okay, and do we get a report from them on how many calls they answered per year or per month or per quarter, or do we have any...
Yes, at our...
Any kind of way that we track this so we know what they're doing?
Yes, ma'am. We can get a report from them at any time about the response times, as well as the calls for service that they're responding to.
I'd like to see that at least every six months or so to see really what the volume is down there. We don't know. We never hear anything about that.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you very much. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
You're good? Okay, thank you. Anything else? Good. Can we get a motion in a second? See a motion in a second on the board? Can we open up for a vote? Pass is seven zero. All right, next one, we have a public hearing. Item for proposed property tax levy for fiscal year 25, and on the proposed final budget for fiscal year 25, and approve the truth in taxation increase. We've opened the public hearing. Go ahead and introduce yourself to the public, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Biddle, the Finance Manager of Budget Research here at the City of Goodyear. And this evening's public hearing is to cover both our fiscal year 2025 final budget, as well as truth in taxation. So here's our agenda. You'll note at the bottom of the slide, the process for final budget adoption is very similar to the steps we just took a few minutes ago with the C F Ds. So first, the budget adoption portion. So this part of my presentation is only one slide, but for the understanding of citizens in the general public who may be watching, I want to quickly recap on how we got to this point in the budget process. The budget process officially kicked off back in calendar year 2023 with extensive collaboration between the departments, City Manager's Office, and the budget team discussing available resources and the needs for the upcoming fiscal year. In an October work session, council was presented with a three-year strategic plan proposal by city leadership spanning fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2027, which was later adopted in November of 2023. This adopted strategic plan, in conjunction with a five-year general fund forecast, which was presented as part of our January 2024 council retreat, created the foundation off of which our 2025 budget was built. In April, we met again at two separate work sessions, where we had in-depth discussions on all aspects of the city manager's recommended budget. And then on May 20th, council adopted the city's tentative budget, where changes from the city manager's recommended budget were reconciled, presented, and discussed. All of those touchpoints bringing us to this evening's public hearing for final adoption of our fiscal year 2025 budget in the amount of $818 million, $818 million, $96,600. This amount is unchanged from the last time we met at tentative on May 20th. If we switch gears to truth in taxation, before I talk specifically about truth in taxation, I want to just spend a minute on this slide talking about property taxes as a whole, because I know council receives a lot of questions from residents about property taxes throughout the year. And I believe this picture does a really good job of depicting where property taxes paid by residents actually go. What this picture is saying is that basically for every $1 in property taxes paid by a Goodyear resident, the city only keeps about 14 cents of that. Only 14 is for city operations, and that's the orange section you can see on the slide, which is a very small portion of the total property tax bill. So even though each year we're required to speak about property taxes on behalf of the city, the reality is the majority of property taxes paid by citizens fall outside of council's decision-making authority. As part of our upcoming in-focus budget addition, just as it was last year, this dollar bill graphic will be included in the publication when it's distributed. So now getting to the truth in taxation piece. It's important to note that truth in taxation deals with only the primary portion of property taxes. Primary property tax is the portion that gets programmed in the general fund, of which almost half is used to fund public safety operations. I also want to note that per financial policy, our primary levy is set at the maximum allowable amount by statute, and this has been a part of our financial policy at the city for over a decade. State law requires this process of truth in taxation anytime the average primary property tax bill increases, even if the primary property tax rate is reduced. So speaking of rates for 2025, our combined property tax rate, which is the portion of the property taxes that does fall under council's authority, is staying the same at $1.74 per every $100 of assessed valuation. This combined rate of $1.74 has been unchanged since 2018. So why is my property tax bill going up if the rate isn't changing is probably the next logical question that people are asking? And that's simply because the value of your property is worth more this year than it was last year, which I think we can all agree is a good thing. And then at the bottom of the slide that you're looking at in the box there, that shows what the average median assessed value for a Goodyear single-family home is. And again, that's taxable value, not resale value. So based on that, the average Goodyear resident will only be paying about $400 to the city. The remainder of your property tax bill, which is much more, goes to other sources, primarily education. And then this slide is being presented simply to show the city's completed all outreach, notifications, and statutory requirements for both truth in taxation and adoption of the final budget. And so in closing, what we're asking of council this evening is, following this public hearing, to take public comment on the truth in taxation and final budget, close the public hearing, and approve our truth in taxation amount of $277,689 by roll call vote. Once our regular meeting is finished, because there's a few additional items on business tonight, immediately after, we'll adjourn, and then we'll reconvene in a special meeting as required by state law to adopt the fiscal year 2025 budget. Looking forward, just like the C F Ds, we have one more remaining touchpoint on June 24th, where we'll officially adopt the property tax levies. Does council have any questions?
Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody, any audience like to say anything? With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Going to get a motion in a second. I see a motion in a second up on the board. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Hampton?
No, I'd say thank you very much for the presentation. And just to the public, I mean, we've been going through this for six months or so, this process has been. So this is one of the many steps that we've gone through. We've analyzed, we've looked at the, looked at the budget and the pros and cons of all the different uses of the, of the money and the, and the budget. So just making that public that this isn't the first, you know, this is our public meeting. We've been going through it for at least six months now, and that's how the process is all, every year, but...
This, this one slide does not do justice to the amount of time, the energy, effort that goes on. Yeah. Everything together to present to council, yes.
So that's why there'll be lack, lack of questions, most likely, because we've, we've definitely looked over this and over this and over this, and this is the solution that we've gone to for this budget cycle, so.
Correct. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the team and thank you for, yeah, for the presentation. So I'm looking forward to it being completed. Thank you.
Anything else? The only thing I want to add, as a former, I guess, budget manager in your position many, many years ago, is that we've got some really sound fiscal policies, conservative fiscal policies, which have been allowed us to weather multiple storms and economic downturns and et cetera. You know, for the most part, you know, one-time money is for one-time expenditures, ongoing, ongoing expenditures. We have replacement funds that are designed just to replace equipment. So during the big downturn in '08 and some of the other stuff we've had in between there, we've been able to weather as a result of very sound conservative fiscal policies. And I appreciate staff for continuing on that path. I mean, our policies with the discussion that we had to make sure they're still sound really doesn't do it justice, just to know that it's very, very conservative and fiscally sound. So with that, let's see what I have here next. We got the notes. We got to know some more speakers. City Clerk, we got the roll call. Well, I've got to close this out, right?
Uh, no, you already closed the public hearing. We just need to do the roll call vote, but it's got to be a voice vote.
Got to be a voice vote on roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, to get a roll call vote. Do we call them one at a time?
Yep.
Okay, all right, we got Vice Mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Stip.
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton.
Aye.
Councilmember Gillis.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Pass is seven zero, thank you. All right, with that, let's see what we've got next. Counsel is unanimously. Let me remind council to wait. Don't we have to close this out for the special meeting?
Not yet, we've got two days.
And then we'll close it out afterwards? Okay, thank you. Like to remind council, wait for a motion and a second before discussion. The first item on business is to consider approving the fiscal 24-25 Community Funding Recommendations. Please go ahead and introduce yourself to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm Christina Panatescu, Grants Community Partnerships Program Manager for the City of Goodyear. I am here to advance the funding recommendations of the Goodyear Community Funding Subcommittee. This competitive grant process supports nonprofit agencies delivering health or human services and quality of life programs to Goodyear residents. In 2021, council expressed an interest in supporting the priority areas identified in the Human Services Phase of our Community and Neighborhood Services Master Plan, which can be found on the city's website. In the first six months of the current fiscal year, more than 5,100 unduplicated services were received by Goodyear residents as a part of the city's community funding investment for this current fiscal year. The 12-month reports are due in July, the third Monday in July, and we'll summarize that information and share it with you via manager memo once they've all been received. In fiscal year 25, we anticipate having $214,400 available to award pending your adoption of the budget later this evening. An announcement was posted on the Goodyear website homepage and emailed to Community Funding Announcement subscribers as well as members of the Faith and Community Roundtable. A media result, a media release resulted in an April 3rd article in the Goodyear Independent, and an optional virtual pre-application meeting was held on April 3rd, and that recording remained on the city's website throughout the duration of the application period. We received a record 53 applications. That's the most I've seen in my tenure with the city. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge and thank Vice Mayor Keno, Councilmember Campbell, and Councilmember Gillis. As the Subcommittee, they demonstrated a sincere interest in meeting the greatest needs of our residents and a commitment to Goodyear. And they have taken the time to review the applications and prioritize these funding requests that I am advancing this evening. The Subcommittee is recommending the full $214,400 in Goodyear community funding be dispersed to these 31 agencies. The full detail can be found in the backup material provided to the council. And with that, I look to you for approval of the recommended allocations, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to say anything? Seeing none, can I get a council, can I get a motion and a second first on the board? Got a motion and a second, open for discussion. Councilmember Gillis is first up.
Christina, I just want to thank you for going out and doing everything that you did to prepare us from last year because we did ask you to do quite a few things and you brought everything back and you made a lengthy process go a, a shorter amount of time. I thought it was great that we had the book to take home ahead of time and go through everything and look at everything kind of like we did back in college. And we could check everything out and then come together with all of us and then figure out what we needed to do. And you really did help us with that because the first year was difficult. This time was actually kind of fun and it went really well. So thanks for the effort that you put into that. I appreciated that.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I agree with Councilmember Gillis on the process improvement. I also want to say how thankful I am for the, the numerous nonprofits that provide such essential services to the community. And we really rely on them to help out and pitch in. And as you can see from the list, they cover a wide range of services. So very appreciative of the work they did. It was hard to make some of the decisions, but I think our group did a great job.
Thank you. Anything else? No further discussion, you open up the voting?
Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Christina. Next item on the business is to consider approving the agreement with Flying Bucket LLC. Go ahead and introduce yourself, please, to the public.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tim Wayne, Deputy Chief. Here this evening to consider a contract with Flying Bucket in 2017. The council did approve an emergency response to the Flying Bucket Range, also known as Dillon Arrow, approximately five miles south of Fire Station 187. Next closest fire station is probably about 25, 30 minutes away. So it made sense with us at the time that we would enter in the contract to provide service. Essentially, what that would mean is they called for 911, there'd be no delays in service, and our crews would be on the road quickly to, to respond to any emergency on site. An annual fee of $3,292 will be received for these, for our services. Approximately four responses per year is kind of what was initially established. After reviewing the last four or five years of, of service to the area, very few instances have occurred. And when they have occurred, they usually have medical folks on site to assist. And, and we essentially come in and support and provide transport. So we're asking tonight that we re-enter this agreement that was established in 2017. And I'll, for that, I'll stand with any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to comment? Seeing none, will we get a motion and a second on the board? Got a motion and a second, open up for discussion. We've got Councilmember Stip.
Chief, the, any fees associated with ambulance transport are not paid as part of this contract?
Correct, that would be sold separate.
Yeah, so even if we make that response and then they, then they are transported, they pay that additional?
Correct, that would be on top of that fee.
Okay, thanks.
Any other further discussion? Seeing none, can you open up the voting? Pass is seven zero, thank you. Does the council have any comments, recommendations, or reports on current events or requests for future items? Got one?
I just want to make a comment real quick and just welcome Deputy Chief Mercy. He is our new interim police chief. And I say congratulations and welcome to that position.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to just tell everyone that didn't make it yesterday to the White Castle Friends and Family Event. It was absolutely wonderful. The food was good and it was wonderful to see all of the staff of White Castle come back, even the couple that got married at White Castle in Scottsdale. And they had their king and queen outfits on, their royal long robes and whatever. They were just a delightful couple. But anyway, we're so happy that they've opened and I know that our residents are going. Especially everyone from Ohio.
Yeah, and I would only like to add, I found out today that our city manager has hidden talents. She can flip burgers very, very well. I couldn't resist, Wynette, I just, I just had to say that.
Those little-known talents.
I was with her today at White Castle flipping burgers and learning how, how that all works. But she did a much better job than I did. But with that, does the city manager have anything to say?
Not after that, Mayor, no. Thank you.
All right, the next meeting will be June 24th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. No further business discussed. This meeting is adjourned and we move right into a special meeting.